This conference will now be recorded.
We have a quorum and we'll call the order this time. Josh?
Tyson Blatchford, Lloyd Colston, Brandon Jellings.
Here.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
He's here.
Dottie Smith.
Here.
And Tom Wheatley.
Here.
That's confirmed five.
All right, at this time, planning commission members are asked to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so they might come to a fair decision. Anyone as usual, no? Okay, we have public comments. I'll make a motion that we hear public comments is this time, limited to three minutes. Want to second that?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're open for public comments, gentlemen? Anything? No? Okay, there we go, and public comments.
Easy enough.
Make a motion, we close public comments?
Second.
Second, Sabat, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are closed on public comments, moving on consent agenda. The meeting minutes for October 10th, 23, since we didn't meet November. And I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes. And I need a second.
A second.
Okay, second, and all those in favor approving the minute and says recorded, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are, vote them in, Josh.
Right.
Um, at this time, we need to recess the planning commission temporarily and reconvene as the planning, as the
Board of Zoning Appeals.
And make a motion that that is so. Second. All those in favor? Okay, planning commission is in recess, and we now convene the Board of Zoning Appeals. And Josh, do we have, we have a consideration of the same item here that we reviewed in depth in June?
We did.
Okay, are there any updates or remedies to that?
At this time, I have not received any more information from that builder. And they're not here either, even though I sent them a letter specifically to invite them to come.
Okay.
I did invite Cheyenne Sonnigo from the state Department of Agriculture, if you have any questions for them. So, that's about all I have for you. I will just remind you, we did meet for this meeting back in June. At that meeting, heard from the developer, heard from me, of course, and voted to table this item for 180 days. Well, 180 days, I believe would have been Sunday, so we are just past 180 days. And like I said, to date, we haven't received any update on that. I did do some checking. And best case scenario for solving the problem would be to elevate the structure. There's not many other options to do, that's not an easy undertaking. It's going to be pricey. But that is the only way for them truly to come into compliance would be to find a way to elevate that structure. It's not impossible, it's an engineering feat, but it can, it can be done.
What kind of home is this?
It is a slab on a grain. It's, yes, I know what you're thinking.
It's not possible, but it's really close.
It's tough.
And we already suggested that, Ian went into detail on that.
And I did check on the possibility of some sort of a levy system. The problem with the levy system is the only way to use that is it has to be a certified levy. So it has to be at the same level that our city levies are certified at. Which is going to be prohibitively expensive beyond even elevating it.
Yep.
So I, that's not very viable. And it's, doesn't really solve the problem anyways, because the problem in this area is inflow from underneath. So water's coming up from underneath, it's not flowing across. And the levy system, like what we have, is flowing across. So it's protecting the city from the, from the river coming over. But in this case, yes, it's technically still river water, but it's coming up from underneath. That's what's actually causing the flooding. And
Oh my.
It's not great drainage in that area. In fact, we already have a pump station on Ninth Street, which is just to the east, northeast of this house. Where the city actually pumps water out of the neighborhood in order to keep the roads open. Sometimes that's not enough, sometimes we have to close that street. And July 19, we did have to close that street because they couldn't keep up. But it does help drain that area, it's just slow. So at this point, the best option for this board, it's not a popular one, I'll give you that, would be to go ahead and deny it, and we would just have to proceed with enforcement action on this property. There is some things that can be done short of elevating it. One of those is, the property gets placed on a list that FEMA keeps. That means the house can never be insured for flood insurance. That would mean, and as far as I know, there's no mortgage associated with the house today. They just paid cash for just why, this is not going to issue, that's why. So, it probably wouldn't hurt the current owner that lives there today, because she's living there. But it will cause problems when she tries to sell the house.
It would be, it would be even unsellable.
Yep. So that's, that's the only really other viable option we have. Cheyenne, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Would you have any other thoughts on that besides what I said?
Um, not really, I didn't realize there was someone living there. I thought the city was withholding the certificate of occupancy, which is why they were concerned, but yeah, other than that, I just, I haven't heard any justification that fits the FEMA criteria for variances, so, yeah.
It does not actually have a certificate of occupancy there.
Okay.
To answer that question. They are living there.
So there's squatters in their own home?
Legally, yes.
Now, are we going to go evict them?
No. What a mess.
So the people that are living there, bobby from the builder? Not knowing, of course, of this problem, right?
Yeah, that's probably a fair way to put it. I mean, it was their land, and they hired the builder to
Okay, okay. Yep. Okay.
Okay.
And there's no one there representing the builder, the engineering company, or the buyer, right?
No.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I did, like I said, I did send a letter about the same time that oh, it's been about three weeks ago that I sent the letter out, to let them know, say, hey, we're talking about your item again.
Right. Any more discussion on the variance?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The 1071 feet required, is that a state requirement or the government federal?
That is, that is the FEMA, we have the National Flood Insurance Rate Maps. And in that area, it's, it's static, it's set layer at 1,070 feet. And so everything in this particular neighborhood, basically, has to be elevated to one foot above that number. And so that's where that 1,071 number comes from.
But they can build if they pay cash and no insurance, they could still go ahead. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
No.
They're supposed to build it up to that elevation in order to be
To even build the plant. Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, if that answered this discussion on this, I would like to motion to a vote to deny this variance at this 1020 West Fifth.
Yeah, it's second.
Okay, second, and, okay. So, we have a voice vote or is it roll call?
We probably should do this one by roll call.
Yeah.
So, let's see. So, Brandon Jellings?
I don't.
You're voting against the motion?
I'm voting with the motion, so
To deny.
It's very deceiving, though, I mean, there's a, there's no construction's been done. Until the I business, I don't really care anymore, there's still a lot of construction to follow. Yeah, I'm voting with the motion.
Okay.
To deny, is that a yes?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you're on the same page. Tal Smith?
Lewis?
Lewis, why did I say Smith, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
So, yes, at this point is denying it.
Okay.
Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Cody Richardson?
He's in transit.
Yeah, I'm on here.
Oh, okay.
Um, I did have a couple more questions, but
oh.
I wasn't there for the original, the original discussion a couple months ago, but I'm going to say no.
Okay, did you hear what I was, how I was describing it to the person here?
Yeah, I did, I just, I guess, understanding that the perm, the permitting originally and how we, how it got built without being caught earlier was what I was still kind of wondering about.
It's a fair question. It's absolutely a fair question.
If we're still open to questions, are we? I mean, is the homeowner
Sorry, I didn't want to, I didn't want to throw you off, but I was still kind of on the fence here. I'm trying to, trying to hurry over there, I'll be there in about five minutes.
May I ask a question about it? Is the homeowner willing to proceed with this? I mean, they should have a major issue, you know, about having a house
I think there's a little bit of a language barrier as part of the issue.
So they don't know
I don't think they probably understand, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
But a permit was pulled to build this structure, and it just got back somewhere?
No, what happened, you know, I might as well just give you the story again. The, it was permitted correctly, and that's fine, the way they did that part of it. They were explained at the very beginning that, oh, this is in a floodplain, you're going to have to get a surveyor to come and show you what the elevation is going to be. They did that. So they, the elevation was determined where it needed to be. My understanding, at least this is what I was told by the builder, is that they misinterpreted that elevation.
Who did?
The builder. So they were told which elevation to build it to, and they did not meet that elevation. They're short about 18 inches of that 1.75 feet. And we never, it wasn't verified until the very end of the project, and that was when it was determined that it was not elevated properly.
So this is a builder issue, this isn't even a homeowner issue. This is why we carry 2 million dollars of building.
I would agree.
The builder is ultimately responsible, the homeowner's responsibility in this will be to accept it as it is with the restrictions that you'll have a very difficult time selling it, and to go after the builder. The builder's the responsible one, it's not our responsibility to make it right. It's our responsibility to pass an ordinance that follows the law.
Okay, let's continue with our vote.
Now, is everybody that's voted so far, are you still okay with the same vote?
Yes.
Good. So, Dottie Smith?
I approve of the denying the variance.
Okay, that's a yes.
There's the Smith, I guess, is where it happens. And Tom Wheatley?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to proceed with sending them a notice of violation and go through that process, and we'll take it from there. I'll work with Cheyenne, who's my state contact, and we will figure out what our next steps need to be. But this, this removes you as a board from the equation.
Right.
Okay. Okay, with that, we can make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board of Zoning Appeals is now adjourned, we're now back to Planning Commission. Moving on to public hearings, in this case, the visability of vacating a portion of an alley within Block 1 of Bowman Edition. Make a motion, we open public hearings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Some on it today. Public hearings, sir, Bowman Edition, it's all you.
Well, let me present this real quick. I'll just explain what it is that's going on here. So, actually, this picture does, shows a pretty good example of where the, the alley is. Or isn't. So Bowman Edition is bounded by Kansas on the north, Avocado on the south, Sixth Street on the east, and Seventh Street on the west, yeah, that's right. So that's where this block is. So, the property owner at 1325, I believe it is, that's not right.
It's 30 down.
1325, sorry, the map, every time I do this, it shifts the map differently, it's a different resolution. So the property owner at 1325 submitted a request to have this alley vacated. So, it is only the alley that's east and west, it is not the north-south alley that's being proposed for vacancy. So they were just trying to expand the yard space. They currently, as you saw in that picture, and I'll show you another picture in a minute. They currently have their vehicles parked in that alley area. They claim, they're not here today, but they claimed that they were unaware of that alley even existed there. And it is difficult to see, and I'll show you what, why I say that in a minute. So this is the, this is the alley that we're talking about, that's in orange. It's not real terribly easy to see there, but that's, that's the area. Here's Sixth, here's Seventh over here. So, there are still utility easements that are on this block here, or this property here, 715 West Kansas. When, when this was built, this subdivision was built, that 715 West Kansas was already built. So, I think it's probably in the 1920s or something like that when the house was built. It was, it was before this plat was made. So when the plat was made, I guess, I guess it was that property that wanted to split this up, wanted to platter. I live on quite a bit more property than what you see there today. They created the alley to do that so that there was, you know, way to get around because there was no way to build the alley, no way to Kansas. So that's why we've seen an east-west alley there. So on the, on the surface of it, it makes a lot of sense why it's there. So, as part of this process, I'll move back up. Oh, I also noted, one of the things that's interesting about this case is back in 1976, oh, it was not planted until 1954. So in 1976, this was requested to be vacated. At that time, it was denied, and the reasoning for the objections to the denial were primarily sanitation trucks use the alley, and it's going to be difficult for them to get around there, I mean, that's what they said. Sanitation trucks do not pick up trash in the alley. They pick it out the street. Another objection was that fire trucks would not be able to get down there and get turned around. I have some difficulty with that one, because I'm not sure how you would get your fire truck turned around that tight corner. So I'm not sure where that was coming from. And I think there was some neighborhood objection for one reason or another. My records didn't give me the information about what the objections were. But there, I wanted to say that because it has been before, the Planning Commission before, it's just been a long, over 50 years or so, since it's been before us.
Was the alley ever continued west to the other street, or is it, that's just half?
It's just half, and that's the way it's plotted. I'll show you what the plat looks like. I did talk with our technical advisory committee, our utilities and such, and nobody indicated there's any utilities in this alley. I did notify everybody that lives in that block. Or everybody received notice of
Mark, we're the founder.
Probably.
And you've heard no objections, right?
I have not, prior to this meeting, heard any objections to the vacation of this alley.
Okay, I'm not there, I can't see, who is there, do we have any?
Yes. Yes, there is a gentleman here that would like to talk at some point.
Okay.
I did want to show you a couple more things, though, before we do that, if we can. This, and I know, Dottie, I'm sorry, you can't see this.
That's all right.
This alley is the north-south portion, this would not go away, this is taken from the south looking north, so, just for reference. I know you can't see that. This is that same picture that I showed at the beginning of the, of this portion of the alley. It, I don't have a survey to tell me exactly where it is, but when I looked at it on site, it's probably about halfway through the middle of that trailer, over to, there's a fence line that's kind of behind these trees. That would be the approximate location alley, it's a 16-foot alley. So yes, as of today, that trailer is blocking the alley between, between these two houses. And this is just looking south on Sixth Street, but I wanted to pull this up because this shows it's still not really easy to see. But this is the plat. There is the alley that goes up through the center of it to, that, this is 715 West Kansas. And then this is the alley that's highlighted in yellow that would be proposed to be vacated. And with that, staff, as staff, I would recommend that it be approved. That's all I have to say about it.
I'm sorry, Josh, you, you recommend what?
Approval of it.
Okay.
Okay. Finally.
You bet.
I will give you, that's a unique alley, and why they cut that, I didn't know with the complete history. But that alleyway goes straight into the backyard of my house, which allows me I put a camper in the back of my backyard and used it
I wanted to see if I got
As a necessity, a few years back.
So this is your property right here?
Yeah, you're right on my house, and that's the backyard.
Okay.
I was able to back a camper, or have I realized I've got access from that north and south alley, but I can't turn anything in there, so there's like a, they put the truck camper, there's a truck camper behind that trailer that's already there, so if I lose that alley, I feel like I lose some value to my property, that's value and access to that backyard, so that's why I'm here. Pardon?
Yeah, I have.
And this is terrible to say, when they put the stuff in there, that there've been people in and out of that house a lot, and they'd be there. And I think I talked to Josh's office mid-June when I started calling, so I'm a little bit caused this.
Triggered it? I was trying not to say that.
Well, anyway, that's my point, it's going to lose straight access from my backyard, and I feel have a negative impact on the value to where that access, and just over the alley.
How long have you been where you're at there?
How long have I been there?
You're at 1336?
I've been there since 1988.
The history of it, like, how long was it in use, and then, I mean, it was a useful alley for most of that time?
As far as
Like, you could drive through, like, you could drive through?
There's not a lot of traffic, no.
But it was accessible?
It was accessible. Or sanitation, when the sanitation would pick up the trash in the alley, they would back into that, because the house, 715, I don't know how that happened.
So what resident has that trailer there?
Pardon?
What resident has that trailer there currently? What number?
That's 1325.
Point five. So they already have a driveway?
Yeah.
So that's a rental?
Pardon, is that a rental? I don't know. I think that they live there. This one on the corner is a rental. Yeah.
How many properties are affected by this?
Directly affected, there's, there's three right around it, plus Mr. Richardson, is that your name?
Yes.
Plus Mr. Richardson, and then anybody that's south of that point could arguably say that they're going to be affected by the closure.
Do these residences have access to their backyards other than this alley?
Yes. And the alley essentially becomes a
See, real well, the line is right here.
So it makes the alley instead of a through street into a dead end. Could drive through it if that's open.
You can, Mr. Richardson, get into his backyard with a vehicle if we vacate the alley?
I could back in or get to there, I just don't, if I have a trailer or anything sizable, I can't. Because I was able to back stuff into my yard.
If it's open, you could drive in one and out the other.
Or, or just back in.
Or back in, but anybody on one of that whole street could be a through.
And then if you vacate that, what's the chances of the north-south being vacated then? You've already set a precedence.
I mean, somebody could request it, absolutely. Yeah, it seems a little bit weird, you could possibly park your stuff there and take over the alley, essentially. It is a weird one, but, I mean, if it was straight, you wouldn't have this question.
Right, right angle's confusing.
It's probably the only right-hand alley in Arc City.
Yeah.
There's a few others, but most of them are either, well, a few others that were plotted that way, I'll put it that way. And a number of them have been vacated because, like downtown, there's a few, where the building, buildings are built on top of the old alley. Right. Different scenario than what is happening. Did you have something?
Yeah, two questions. If you vacate it, who does the property go to? And and give me a senior moment here, I have a question.
Okay, so, okay.
Do the property owners on the north and south, are they aware of this? Have you notified them that this is being discussed? Are they wanting the property?
I haven't had a rejection of it.
Okay.
So I did talk specifically to 715, the owner of that property, and they're they weren't concerned about that part of it.
Okay. But the, that would be split and go to the two property owners?
Yeah, it would be split in half, now technically, the, because of the shape of these lots, part of it would go to 715.
Yes.
But other than that, the other, the half, the south half would go to 1325, the north half, except for that sliver, would go to 1327. And again, the other part of the alley, I definitely understand what he's talking about, but the other part of the alley that's behind his house would not be vacated. What maintenance does the city do on alleys? Just in general? Like if we say, if we do this, and we go back to the city, does it just grow up into Johnson Grass, or? Generally speaking, what the city's responsibility is to keep it clear, keep it graded. Really don't do If I'm being totally honest, it doesn't always happen. Yeah. The, generally speaking, the clearer area, we do tend to fall back on the adjacent property owners to keep that part of it clear. But the grading is, is still the city's responsibility to do. Whether that's being done, I can't say.
So out the city, the property owners adjacent to alleys are responsible to keep it moated free of weeds and trees, et cetera, like that, but it is the city's responsibility to keep it graded?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on that? So, we're just advising, and then vote on this? So we're just advising, and then vote on this?
Yeah, I'm requesting about where the other cover down.
Well, Mitch.
I have another question. Something, I'm not there, I can't see the map, so I'm having trouble visualizing. Um, Mr. Richardson owns a property that is adjacent to this alley. Um, as I understand this, his concern is access to his backyard if this is vacated? Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, he would not be able to, um, back a trailer into his backyard if, if this was vacated.
So it runs like a T, it runs like a T to the other alley, and the top of the T is his property. And the alley is the base of the T.
Okay. So it doesn't infringe on his ability to use his yard?
No.
It doesn't?
Well, it depends, define use of yard. Turning around, the equipment is used, and it does infringe on that, but you can access it. So it's two different questions.
Okay.
And he said, he actually said that.
Okay. It just makes it more difficult for him to get, let's say, a trailer into his backyard?
Makes it impossible. If your trailer's long enough, there's no way that he's going to be able to back all the way down the alley, running north, south, and then make a corner and tuck his camper back into his backyard. The only way to do that is come off of, what was that, Sixth?
Uh huh.
Incorrect, wrong, but you're backing down the, the alley going west, straight into the backyard.
And he wasn't, he wasn't used since nineteen eighty-six.
Where did it go?
Know what happened there. There it goes.
And Mr. Richardson's property is at the end of this alley?
Yeah, it's straight to the west of the alley.
Okay.
It is the end of the alley that we're talking about.
Here's his property line, here is the alley. So there's sixteen-foot of his property is alley.
Okay, Mr. Richardson's the only neighbor we've heard from, right?
Tonight, yeah. Yeah, the only other property owner I have heard from at all was the one at seven fifteen West Kansas, and he didn't.
One that's requesting?
Yeah. No, no, the other, the, this, this is a different one.
There to the north, kind of in between.
Yeah.
And what was their opinion?
They were, they were fine with it. They weren't opposed to it.
They just didn't, basically didn't care, right?
Correct.
Makes no.
So it doesn't make any difference to them one way or the other?
Yep.
So who requested this thirteen twenty-five?
Thirteen twenty-five is one that requested it.
Okay.
Say we're here to, we're okay.
It makes sense.
If we, if we vacate this alley, then it reverts where each property owner adjacent to it owns half of the alley, right?
Correct.
Does that give Mr. Richardson enough room to do what he needs to do?
No, he didn't get any piece of it.
Right, no.
Yeah, he won't be.
No, he'd just be blocked off.
He'd be blocked from doing it.
Negative, none of the positive.
Alley, alley is on the base of the T, and the top of the T is where his property is.
Okay. Okay, I can visualize that.
We're trying to send you a picture here.
And the, the people asking for variance.
Difficulty.
Technically can't park the truck.
I can, don't worry, I can visualize that.
Okay.
Get half, they're only going to get half. They'll have to ask their neighbor if they can park the half on their lawn.
Really, yeah. Basically, they're not the only way that they can.
Yeah, to me, it's still, it seems weird that you could park an alley and take it.
So what, in essence, what this does is to give one property owner the bigger yard they'd like to have, we're taking away from another property owner the ability to access his backyard as he has been able to. Is that right?
That's, that's a fair assessment.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, we sent you a picture. Hopefully you get it. Yeah, it's, it's on its way.
Emailed or text?
Text, text out of your phone.
So let's just, we did not have variance. They're still going to park their stuff there unless some, I mean, how do you?
No, I didn't get it, guys.
Give it a minute, you're pretty far.
Is the resolution?
I can't, I'm way back. But the ocean's beautiful here, and the weather is perfect.
Thank you, rub it in.
You're all welcome to join me.
Well.
Say, say your question again, Brent.
Well, if, if we deny the variance, we're, he's still in the same boat unless the city does something to say, hey, aren't you?
What happened in this case was Mr. Richardson filed a complaint, she said earlier. And at that point, city code enforcement checked it out, and that was when we thought, well, if, if they requested variance and it's granted, they're not in violation anymore. So that's how this process started.
Yep.
And so if the vacation was denied, then it would just go right back to that enforcement. So they would be required basically to move it. That's, that's what it comes right down to.
I'm not comfortable to make things accessible, convenient for one to take from another. That doesn't seem to me to be the right thing to do. Particularly since it's been this way for quite a while, and the property owners have had it this way for quite a while. I mean, it's not new news to any of them, but it doesn't seem right to me. Because one property owner would like to have a bigger backyard, we're going to take the ability to use his from another property owner where he has had that access. So, um.
I think the trailer should have been towed already. That's me.
Pardon?
I think that trailer should have been towed already. It's fine, but where I live, it wouldn't stand.
I was trying to be patient, I kept thinking they were, you know.
Yeah.
We would do something.
And so we deny this.
How long did it take?
Probably a year and a half or two years.
Okay. Couple of years, so it's.
Like they had a few people in that.
It's permanent for them. I second that motion, Dottie. We'll make a motion to deny this.
I will, let me put that motion together. I make a motion, if discussion is finished, I make a motion that we deny the variance, uh, leaving the alley intact as it is.
Okay, first, we'll make a motion to close public hearings on this, Bowman addition.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearings closed, and now, um, Dottie, make your motion again.
I make a motion that we deny the request for variance, leaving the alley intact as it is.
I'll second that.
To clarify, vacation is the terminology here.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
We need a vote by roll call.
Yeah.
First of all, we're in favor of this, uh, voting as denying the vacating.
Yeah, to be clear, this is a vote to deny it, not to.
Yes, vote is denied. Okay, let's vote.
All right, so Brendan Jones?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
Dottie Smith?
Yes.
And Tom Wiggly?
Yes.
Okay, vacation is denied.
Vacation is denied. That concludes the voting on Bowman addition. And we can move on to other items?
Yeah, I do have one additional item. Um, I know you all are aware of this property. Um, because it was discussed at a previous meeting. Other planning commissions also have been at the city commission somewhere. Well, needless to say, the city did purchase the property, for better or for worse.
Oh, yeah.
And so what this action will do is bring it into the city so that it's, so annex it. And this body is just making a recommendation. Um, that's part of the requirements of doing annexations. We go to the planning commission, the planning commission makes a determination if annexation is viable, like it matches Angie's patterns, that sort of thing, that's what we're looking at. Um, this, normally what I would do when I bring an annexation to you, I would ask you, we would also do a rezone. Um, at this point, we don't know exactly how all of that will work. We do have, I will tell you, we do have one developer that is interested in a portion of the property, um, but not the whole thing. And so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to establish a zoning as all, as, say, for instance, high density, if that's not the way it's all going to be used. And so what happens when you annex automatically is it comes in as an R1, which is low density. And in order for somebody to do anything other than basically large lot, single-family homes, would be to get it rezoned to whatever the appropriate district was for what they're wanting to do. And so the idea behind even getting this property purchased in the first place was that it would be most likely split into multiple pieces, sold off. Uh, the parts, not so much, unless you found one developer that was going to do a hundred and one acres, but as Brendan could probably attest, that's probably way too much to do. Probably would do basic. And so that's, that's kind of what I proposed today, is to see what your opinion is on the annexation of this property, and just to let you know that rezonings will probably be coming in the next month or two, January, February. I don't know exactly when those will be brought before us, but, um, I know that that proposal has to go through some uh, things with the city commission first, uh, some sort of an option agreement or a memorandum of understanding or something along those lines, um, before we even entertain something like a rezone.
If it is annexed, what is the city's then responsibility for providing services?
So they would be, we would be responsible for, uh, at the very least, assisting developers in receiving utilities. Right now, there is a sewer line that extends from the, uh, backside of Compass Point subdivision and goes south back to Forest Glen. So there is a sewer line that already serves the subdivision, and like, the water would basically come from the extensions that were made for Compass Point. So there is water, both of them are readily available. Um, and the rest of the utilities, um, that the cities are spots before are also readily available. So the city would work with individuals to extend the utilities where they need to be. That's what happened with Compass Point, for example. We, we worked with the original developer on that to get those utilities connected to that area.
Water and what else was it?
Water and sewer is what we're focused on.
Water and sewer.
Just because that's our only utilities that we deal with directly.
Yeah. Okay.
Good. Is there anything else?
That's all I had on it. I'm looking for a recommendation on it.
Okay. Hmm. To be discussed at the January meeting, or just, you want anything else today on it?
That probably this would go before the city commission at the second meeting in January. I tend to avoid the first meeting for anything if I can, because that's the reorganization.
That's right.
It'd be a little crazy, Dottie would.
Okay, um, other businesses, we have chairman of the planning commission.
Are we willing to vote on this, this item first, though?
We need to finish that one up.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we do, I thought it was just recommendation. Okay, well, so we make a motion to vote on, consider recommendation for the city's annexation of the hundred and one acres. Do we want to vote on that?
It's really a formality. It was going to get annexed in, no matter who bought it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
They already have their fingers in it with this sewer line. So regardless who bought it, because when I was looking at buying it, I knew it was going to get annexed in. So this is strictly a formality.
Okay.
Cities already got their hands in it, uh, they're already invested in it, so it will, so we might as well not prolong anything.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we vote to annex this property into the city.
Um, I have a question for one of the planning commissioners. Um, is anyone on the planning commission interested in future purchase of this property? Or any part of it?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
That's, that's a fair question.
Yeah. No one here, anyone? Maybe Lloyd is.
Okay. Okay, then I would accept that.
Okay. And motion's carried, all those in favor to vote on this, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Josh?
That's all I need.
Okay. Any other items from the city?
No, other than the one that you were about.
Oh, just let everyone know that, um, you know, the chairman position has been vacated. Anyone interested in it, we're going to formalize that in January. And at this time, I would like to nominate Dottie Smith as chairman. What do you think, Dottie?
I talked to Josh earlier today, and I would accept that.
Awesome.
This is, this is my third time on the planning commission, so.
There you go. All right, that's all I had, anyone else? Okay, I'll make a motion for adjournment for the December planning commission meeting. All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for taking the time out of your vacation, Dottie.
Yes, thanks, Dottie.
Thank you.